Um, I am calling today's uh Bloomington Common Council Special Session to order. Um, this is Wednesday, September the twenty second, twenty twenty one. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Scamblory?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Sandberg?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Um, hope everyone has had a great day and stayed dry. Um, with the agenda summation, um, we do have legislation, I'm sorry. Yeah, legislation for second readings and resolution, um, and none of these have been considered by a council committee. Um, I will make note that each ordinance listed below has been previously amended at the council's May nineteenth, twenty twenty one regular session. Ordinance seventeen dash oh nine and ordinance seventeen twelve were amended further at the August thirty first, twenty twenty one special session. At this meeting, the council may consider adoption of each ordinance as amended. Okay, continuing on with the agenda summation. The remaining ordinances which I will list um has the exact same introductory language. Um, and it is as follows. An ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the city of Bloomington. And we will start our session today with ordinance seventeen dash ten, which is area one B, southwest B Bloomington. Next will be ordinance seventeen eleven, area one C, southwest C Bloomington annexation. Next will be ordinance seventeen twelve, area two, southeast Bloomington annexation. Next will be ordinance seventeen dash thirteen, area three, North Island Bloomington annexation. Next seventeen dash fourteen, area four, Central Island Bloomington annexation. The next will be ordinance seventeen dash fifteen, area five, South Island Bloomington annexation. And lastly, we'll hear ordinance seventeen dash seventeen, area seven, North Bloomington annexation. Then we will deal with matters related to council schedule um before adjourning for the evening. Um, before we get started, I do, well, one thing is, I believe, councillor, um, Mayor Hamilton wished to make a statement. Is he here this evening? Or someone from the mayor's office? And while they're preparing, I will remind, um, if there's no objections, we will continue with the rules we had last week with regard to public and council member debate. Council members during comments and questions uh will be limited to minutes as well as public comment um will be limited to three. Um, Mr. Lucas, did, did we expect a statement from the mayor's offices? I'm sorry, there's.
Hello, Philip Guthrie Corporation Council. The mayor is not making a statement tonight. Um, our, our statement is just that, um, as we've all been looking at these for many months and in the last few months refining them further, these areas. We uh believe that they are appropriate for annexation and we ask that you consider each one and annex these areas. Aside from area seven, which as you all know, we have recommended not be uh included in adoptions.
Of course. Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. As we move through the ordinances, um, do I understand that you will, as a presenter, that you will not be making a individual statement for each ordinance as we go through?
That's correct.
But we'll be, but we'll be prepared for questions as.
Absolutely, we will be prepared for questions.
Hey, thank you very, very much. Um, and thank you for your comments. Moving on, I do believe that we have legislation for second readings. Councilmember Flaherty?
President, I move that ordinance seventeen dash ten be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second. Um, the resolution seventeen ten be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Um, sorry, just a parliamentary point, yeah, two things. First, it was uh ordinance seventeen ten, and I believe we need to take a a roll call uh on the.
Oh, did I misspeak that?
I think we just.
Seventeen ten. Okay, thank you. Got too many papers on my desk as always. Um, thank you. Um, I will correct that. Ordinance seventeen ten. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do that motion passes. Will the court please read?
Yes, ordinance seventeen ten, an ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the city of Bloomington, southwest B Bloomington annexation. The synopsis is as follows. Upon adoption, this ordinance would take various steps necessary for the annexation of the southwest B Bloomington annexation area, which is depicted in Exhibit A and attached to this ordinance. In the course of proposing the annexation of this area, the city prepared a written fiscal plan for municipal annexation that describes the proposed provision of both non-capital and capital services to the annexation territory and was initially adopted via Resolution seventeen seventeen and amended via Resolution twenty one ten. The approval of a further amendment to the written fiscal plan was scheduled for consideration at a common council session on September fifteenth, twenty twenty one, when the common council will consider adoption of the proposed annexation. Note on amendments which have been incorporated into ordinance seventeen ten. At the May nineteen, twenty twenty one regular session, the council adopted or Amendment one to ordinance seventeen ten, which changed various date references and signature lines to bring the proposed ordinance forward to twenty twenty one so that it could be properly considered by the common council.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Can move that ordinance seventeen dash ten be adopted?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to the second. Um, the administration or petitioner will have no comments, as I understand it. Um, we'll move to uh council questions. Do we have any questions from council members? Okay, seeing none. We will now move to the public for any public comment on ordinance seventeen dash ten. Um, that's for area one B, the southwest B Bloomington annexation. Um, and if you wish to publicly speak, please indicate by using a raised hand function on Zoom. Um, participants may find the raised hand function either on the participants button, uh reactions button, or the more buttons at the bottom of Zoom. If you're on a mobile device, you should be able to reach us with star nine. Um, and if either or neither of those work, you can please send a note to our meeting post via chat function on Zoom indicating your desire to speak publicly. Do we see anyone? Mr. Lucas?
Yes, first up is, just a moment. Jamie Ford should now be able to unmute.
Look, can you hear me?
Sure can. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. Can you identify yourself? You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Ford, and I believe you have no choice but to vote no on the resolution for annexation of area one B. On page nine of the annexation FAQs linked to the annexation page of its website, the city of Bloomington states, quote, "The annexation process is very strictly delineated in the state code and must be closely followed," end quote. If that is true, then why does it seem that the city and this council is not following that process? The city's FAQs echo the Indiana Code that lays out the requirements that the city must follow, and Resolution twenty one dash twenty nine lists the ways that it claims to have met those requirements. Based on the timeline and actions of the city and the council, I call into question whether those claims are valid. First, Indiana Code thirty six, Article four, Chapter three, and acknowledged by the city in the aforementioned FAQs, lists the process as follows. Notify the public via mail and public outreach of the public, of the proposed annexation. Introduce the annexation ordinances to the city council and adopt a fiscal plan. Publish the mail, publish and mail the ordinances and fiscal info to property holders. Hold a public hearing, hold a city council meeting to consider adopting the ordinances, then publish their remonstrance process, et cetera. If that is the, quote, "strictly delineated" order, then why did the city council pass the resolution updating the fiscal plan after the public hearing and after the certified mail, including the fiscal plan was sent out? Indiana Code thirty six, Article four, Chapter three, Section three point one, letter D, states, quote, "The municipality, municipality shall establish and adopt the written fiscal plan before mailing the notification to landowners in the territory proposed to be annexed under Section two point two of this chapter," end quote. I'm not a lawyer, so this is just based on my reading comprehension skills, but nowhere in this section nor any other section under Title thirty six, Article four, Chapter three, is there any language written that allows for the adoption of a fiscal plan nor updating that plan after the public hearing and the certified mail about annexation have been sent out. I ask the city and the council to cite the specific chapter, section, subsections, and so forth that specifically allow the council to update the fiscal plan after the public hearings and just before the annexation vote. Based on the Indiana Code that the city says it must follow, voting in favor of annexation based on the fiscal plan version five point O dated September tenth, two thousand twenty one, published after the certified mail sent out dated June first, two thousand twenty one, and after the August hearings, is wrong and a violation of Indiana Code. The passing of area one A annexation last week was a violation of this code, and any resolutions that passed in this set, um, in this session will be a violation as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Jamie Ford. Uh, who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
I see no other requests for comment at the moment.
Okay, um, I saw a hand temporarily, so I'll just wait just a second.
I, I do see a hand now. I believe Margaret Clemens is up next.
Good evening, co- city council members. Um, one of the many things that I love about.
Excuse me, could you identify yourself before you get started? You'll have your full three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Uh, my name is Margaret Clemens, and um I'm a longtime resident of the, of Bloomington. I've been around Bloomington and Monroe County for, since nineteen seventy nine. I've lived in every housing type that Bloomington has to offer. And I just would like to say that one of the aspects about Bloomington that I really appreciate in our community is how intelligent our residents are. And uh Jamie Ford's presentation now should be very convincing to the city council. In addition, I believe that the uh residents who have signed petitions in uh large numbers in annexation area one B uh should be very informative to uh the city council in this important deliberation. Um, we uh, I'm involved with an organization called County Residents Against Annexation, and we're concerned about the stewardship of our community. And uh we're concerned about management, mismanagement, and about um uh safety issues, and we're concerned that the public will is not being listened to or abided by. Um, throughout annexation area one B, um, there are a number of elderly people on fixed incomes who's, for whom the added tax impact would be a burden. In addition, annexation area one B does not meet the density requirement of three people per acre to be annexed. Furthermore, um, in the remonstration period, we will have sixty five percent of the necessary signatures that will void this effort. So my question to the city council is, start now to heal uh the community that has been divided by this aggressive and hostile takeover. So much about it doesn't make sense. The way that it's been enacted hasn't uh been honorable. And I would ask the city council members to be prudent with the resources that the citizens and the residents themselves had paid, have paid for, and to just vote no on this misguided uh direction. I um, I think that you could save the community untold dollars, ill will, um, and help our community to heal and help us build a future that we can uh, e- everyone can join in to build together for our own residents. So thank you for listening to me, and thank you for your careful deliberation on this issue.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Phil Argenti. Apologies if I'm pronouncing any names tonight.
All right, can you hear me?
I sure can.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Phil Argenti, and I live in the Highlands subdivision. Uh, I've lived in the Highlands subdivision for over ten years. I am opposed to annexation for many of the same reasons that have been stated previously, so I won't go into all of those. Yes, I have city water and sewer, and we do pay the county premium, and I feel that is appropriate since I'm not a resident of the city. It has been mentioned in previous forums that the county has not set up to take care of neighborhoods, and that is why, and that is what cities are for. The county has been very responsive to anything that has arisen in our subdivision, whether that's pothole repair, sidewalk or tree trimming in the right of ways, uh adding additional speed limit or stop signs, uh has been very good with snow removal in the winter. We have excellent service from the Fire Protection District, and the Sheriff Department has been responsive when needed. I also like the ability to choose which trash provider fits my needs and the ability to shop that around. After the discussion during last week's meeting, I am also concerned about adequate police coverage if all proposed areas are approved for annexation. Uh, during the meeting last week, I believe it was council members uh Volin and Flaherty uh both made similar comments stating that they were surprised with the number of county residents that didn't know anything about the two-mile fringe or the area plan for annexation. As I stated, I moved here in, in two thousand ten, and it wasn't until twenty seventeen when the annexation process started that I learned anything about these things. Um, and there wasn't anything that I could do about it because the developer uh signed a remonstrance waiver with the city um, uh waiving all of our rights. Uh, none of this was disclosed at the time that I purchased my home. Uh, I was pleased to learn that state legislature passed legislation a couple of years ago to limit the time period that remonstrance waivers are effective for. As such, I will be participating in this process if the council votes in favor of annexing area one B tonight, even though the city legal staff doesn't feel that the legislature has any business uh changing this process, a- and that's what, uh, and that the statute is not in order. Uh, thank you for allowing me to make comments this evening, and I encourage you to oppose this annexation ordinance.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will now move to council. For any further questions or final comments on ordinance seventeen dash ten, area one B, southwest B Bloomington. Councilmember Scambler?
Yes, thank you. Um, I appreciated all the public comment, and particularly those are very thoughtful comments by Ms. Ford. Would it be possible for Ms. Guthrie or perhaps Mr. Unger to respond to her comments?
Yeah, I can. Uh, Steve Unger, um, Boz McKinney Evans, uh outside Annexation Council for the city. Um, uh, you, you are allowed to update the fiscal plan throughout the annexation process. Um, there are multiple cases that, over the years, have addressed this issue, allowing you to amend the fiscal plan even up until the time of a remonstrance trial. A few years ago, in some of the changes that the legislature made in the statute, they did insert into the statute a restriction on when you can, like, you can amend the fiscal plan, and that is um, up until the date that the remonstrance petition is filed, you can um amend the fiscal plan. After that date, at least sixty five percent of the uh landowners in the annexation territory have to consent to the amendment. So it is actually fairly regular, um entirely consistent, permissible under um annexation case law and under the annexation statute to, to amend the fiscal plan. And, and we, we follow the statute to, to a T. That's why we adopted a fiscal plan back in twenty seventeen um by resolution and then updated a fiscal, the fiscal plan by resolution earlier this year.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Unger. Thank you, Councilmembers Scambler. Do we have any other questions and or final comments from council members on ordinance seventeen dash ten? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, uh, thank you. Another, another question, um, just to follow up on something a member of the public, um, mentioned, because I've heard this, uh, I, I think my understanding is correct, but I want to confirm again because I keep hearing um in indications from members of the public that they have a view of the contrary uh of my understanding. Um, so two questions related to density um of proposed areas. One is, um, the city staff know offhand uh what the population density is of area one B. And second, uh, it was spoken that there is a requirement of a minimum of three um persons per acre uh density for an area. And could we speak to, A, the specific number, B, whether or not that's a requirement, and what uh state statute has to say about uh density in the context of annexation proposals? Thank you.
Yeah, again, Steve Unger, um, outside uh council for annexation. I can address that, I think. Um, again, the, the, the concept of density comes up when you get into uh, number one, an annexation remonstrance has to be filed with a sufficient number of signatures. And then one of the various avenues that the city can proceed with under an annexation and a remonstrance includes the annexation of urbanized territory. And there are different tests for urbanized areas. Uh, one of those tests is three persons per acre. Um, one of the test is, tests is uh zone for commercial business or industrial use. Um, and one of the tests is um, um, if, in terms of urbanization, is if it's at least sixty percent um uh subdivided. The, um, I believe, and I don't have the figures right in front of me, but with respect to area one B, what you have is an area that is either, you, you have an area that is partially zoned, commercial business and industrial, and partially um residential. And what you have is, in the residential areas, you far exceed the three persons per acre. And then you have, um, and, and then, of course, you meet the other tests with, with respect to the other areas that are, that are commercial business or industrial.
Uh, just a quick follow-up, if that's okay, President Sims?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty, yes.
Thank you. So those three categories you mentioned, Mr. Unger, those, it's any of the three. It's not you have to meet all three or.
Correct, correct.
And second, um, those are relevant only in a remonstrance trial. They're not preconditions for considering a voting on annexation. Is that also correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just to follow up on that question with Mr. Unger. Um, so just to be clear, the three persons per acre is only for acreage that's residential, not commercial and industrial.
Yeah, I mean, it's talking about the residential areas. You know, it's, it's, again, it's, it's an attempt to look at what is urbanized. Um, and, you know, and I've, I've had remonstrance trials where this issue has come up and, and I was, uh, had was been successful in by demonstrating that the area was partially uh commercial, right? It was developed as commercial, and that the rest of the area was, was, was residential. And those areas that were residential met the three persons per acre test, or in some cases were met the sixty percent subdivided requirement. Um, in a court, the courts have agreed with me on that.
Okay, so, uh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other questions or final comments from council members? Uh, Councilmember Volin?
Are we in comment now, debate?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, uh, one, uh, member of the public spoke tonight again about not being aware of the areas intended for annexation uh and complained that uh the developer of his housing supposedly waived uh the rights of the people living there. I mean, uh, I don't know what to say to that gentleman except caveat emptor. Uh, that's, uh, that it cannot be the responsibility of the rest of the community to know of what one person is buying uh in an area that might become part of the community. I'm a little surprised to hear that critique, but uh a more general critique came from Ms. Clemens, who uh literally seems to be asking us to not join the community uh to, 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 uh, she's talking about how we are all of this community, and yet uh the people of this community don't want to join this community. The people who are currently visible on the screen represent the legal entity of this community. We're elected by the residents of the community. And annexation law exists because uh, you know, cities grow because people move. Uh, they, 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 uh, development gets built right outside the community. And uh, it's a, it's a uh longstanding practice that cities grow. Uh, cities grow by annexation as well as population. And we can debate what order that should happen in, and certainly this city is no longer going to uh issue or to, to get a sewer waiver in uh expectation that when they eventually get annexed, there won't be an objection. Uh, it will be a precondition from now on. Uh, what these ordinances are doing is writing a longstanding oversight uh that we've seen that seventy three percent of the, it used to be eighty five percent of the population of the, the county was in an urbanized area. It's now dropped or in, in a uh municipal corporation. Now it's down to seventy three percent. That's because the city has been, uh, has neglected to annex to the benefit of residences that uh have not had to pay taxes uh to the city that they call home. So uh, you know, this ordinance is striving to do the very thing that many people who are objecting to it uh claim that they want to be part of. They, they say that they're part of this community, but here is the community moving to make them a part of the community, and they don't want to become part of the community. We're not trying to annex Smithville or Harrodsburg or New Unionsville. We're trying to annex areas where people say they live in Bloomington. So I have yet to find, to hear an argument uh that is persuasive enough to vote against ordinance one, uh, the area one B being annexed into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volin. Do we have any other?
Yes, thank you, President Sims. Uh, thank you to members of the public who have uh emailed and uh been active in these meetings uh since May. Um, I view annexation as a way for people who already have a connection with the city due to their proximity to Bloomington, a way for these people to become fully a part of our community. Most people who live in the annexation areas already use city streets and amenities, have jobs in the city, go to concerts, plays, and other events in the city, and or do their shopping in the city. Annexation makes it official. They are part of Bloomington. Many properties in area one B were extended sewer service years ago without being annexed. A deal was made. We will give you sewer service, and in return, you will eventually be annexed to be part of Bloomington. Now it's time, the city is now calling in that deal. What annexation will not automatically do, and this, I think there's a lot of misconceptions out there. So annexation will not make you convert from septic system to city sewer. You only have to convert uh to sewer if and when your septic system fails, and if you live within three hundred feet of an existing sewer line. It will not automatically install sidewalks on your streets. We have a long waitlist for people who are in the city already who want sidewalks. So we will, you know, base those considerations on mainly on safety concerns. So we will, you know, base those considerations on mainly on safety concerns. It will not automatically install streetlights on your streets. If you do not want streetlights, then the city will not, and Duke will not enter into an agreement to provide you with streetlights. It will not allow unrestricted development next door to you. You're not going to have high rises showing up on, in your backyard. The city has strict development regulations in its unified development ordinance that protect both the environment and existing residential neighborhoods. After annexation is decided for certain, the City Planning and Transportation Department will hold public hearings on what zoning districts will apply. Annexation will also not automatically bring a bunch of rowdy students into your neighborhood. Students prefer to live closer to campus, and that's already within the city limits. Just a few things that annexation will do. It will make it possible for bus service, including BT access service, which is for people with disabilities, to extend to your neighborhood. It will provide hand rental inspection services for all residential rental rental properties, which is a safeguard for tenants. It will provide city maintenance and snow removal for streets. It will allow for our community to develop in a cohesive way and for us to plan in the long term all of the development that is adjacent to our, to our current city limits. It will allow people in the annexed areas to eventually vote for the city representatives who make decisions that affect your everyday lives, the nine of us here, the mayor, the city clerk. And finally, it will make you all part of the community that you already call home. Many people who live outside the city limits, if they go anywhere else in Indiana or traveling, they'll say, I'm from Bloomington. Well, let's make it official. So I'm going to vote in favor of this ordinance, and I intend to vote in favor of the subsequent ordinances before us this evening for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, President Sims. This, my comments on this will apply to the other areas, so I don't mean to be redundant later. I may include other comments on those specific areas as we proceed, but my primary concern of this process is extending city services that we are simply not, when we're not in a position to do so. We're not in a position to expand geographic boundaries of the city while public safety is in its present state. The financial assessments indicate, they estimate that twenty-three to thirty-five additional police officers will be needed by the end of 2024. And this is just simply unrealistic. This is further made improbable because we are currently in a deficit of sworn officers, at least fourteen. If you include the 2019 organizational assessment, if you take that into account, then we are down as many as fifty-three officers for this annexation. So in short, I can't vote to expand the responsibilities of the police department while they're working mandatory overtime without a convincing plan to remedy this problem. There are other reasons why I'm voting against this as well, and I'll make very brief comments. I take seriously the concerns of the county commissioners, especially the decline in county revenue and the effects, especially on the justice system. I think an incremental approach to this would have been received better. And I think that what we should do if we're going to proceed on annexation is investigate an interlocal agreement so that we could assist the county in financing the justice system. Another reason is that I note that annexation, with annexation, sprawl usually comes attendant to that. It inevitably follows, simply because as you extend city services, development becomes probable in those areas. So the county has taken great pains in their planning documents to maintain the rural character of some of the areas that we're intending to annex, and I don't think those have been fully considered. All of the public comment that I've received, with just a couple of exceptions, and there've been many, and I'm sure you all have received them, has been in opposition to this annexation. And I take those concerns very seriously. And I note also that past annexation processes have not been as contentious. No doubt, part of this reason is because we're proceeding to do this during a pandemic. And this, this process has been occurring during a time when the public have not been able to meet, and their meetings, our interactions have been quite limited. And then lastly, I don't think that an evaluation of the effect on low-income residents of these areas that are going to be annexed has been made, has been evaluated. So I'm concerned about that as, as we proceed this evening. So I'll be voting no on each ordinance as it comes to us, and that concludes my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Do we have any other?
Thank you. I will also use this opportunity to speak fairly generally to my framework and thinking about this annexation proposal from the administration. I do very much appreciate the thoughts of my colleagues and the large amount of public input we've gotten over time. The ideas and thoughts and considerations from everybody we've heard from have informed my thinking, and I've appreciated the conversations, including at constituent meetings that I've had about this and email exchanges and more. I mentioned last week a couple of sort of high-level guiding thoughts for me, one of which is that where waivers exist that were, against remonstrance, that were secured in exchange for extending sewer service, that is, to me, essentially a type of time-lagged voluntary annexation. It could have been a voluntary annexation at the time. We could have withheld any sewer extension of service. These developments, a lot of Area 1B would not have been built unless they agreed to be annexed at that moment, but we didn't. We signed contracts instead, and again, exchanged consideration. We said, you can have the sewer now. The city will annex a number of areas like this all at one time in the future. That was the contract. That was the agreement. That was voluntarily entered into by the parties negotiating at that time. And of course, future parties are bound by that if they buy properties with those agreements. So I don't see that, for areas where we have waivers that were secured in exchange for the extension of sewer service, I don't see that as aggressive or somehow undemocratic. It is, it is a voluntary agreement. It just is happening on a time lag. Going forward, I don't think we'll do that anymore because some of the trouble that we've seen it has brought, including attempts by the state legislature, some illegal or unconstitutional, to change the rules of annexation in the middle. So some of that's supposed to play out, but that's at a high level how I think about those particular properties. Second, it is also true that there's somewhat of a patchwork of areas that have sewer service and the areas that don't outside the city. This is actually true within the city as well, in areas. It's, it's not possible to annex only the areas with waivers based on the structure of state law. And of course, it's probably not advisable anyway. As cities grow, different areas have different characteristics. Not every area that you might propose to annex is going to be of a uniform character. But something to geographic proximity and contiguity in city boundaries does make sense to me. So when we look at areas that have largely received sewer service, even if not every parcel or street has received sewer service, I think it's reasonable to look at a cohesive area that we'd be adding to city limits. And then, I guess, a few, a few additional thoughts on various themes that have been mentioned. I didn't have lengthy conversations. I had one, I had one good conversation with the county commissioner about, about annexation. But it was disappointing to me, frankly, that all three commissioners were staunchly opposed to any sort of annexation at all, as opposed to, say, working with the city to figure out what might make sense and address some of their concerns, but also address the concerns of the city, reflecting its growth. I didn't really see that. I did have, I would say, some more productive conversations with city, I'm sorry, county council members who are the fiscal body of the county, and none of whom that I spoke to had serious concerns about the fiscal prospects of the county. They felt they would be more or less totally fine post-annexation because, of course, their service territory and obligations will reduce as well. Of course, it's true that the county has some obligations that serve countywide, city, and non-city residents. But overall, the members of the fiscal body of the county that I spoke to were not particularly concerned about the fiscal impact on the county. I agree with Councilmember Rallo that an incremental approach might, might be more advisable or better. Unfortunately, that's not really possible because of, again, attempts by the state legislature to change the rules of annexation in the middle of an annexation process or in the middle of agreements we've secured in the context of sewer extension, extending sewer service and waivers. So in particular, 2015 law makes an incremental approach very, very difficult because any future annexation would consider past city boundaries for contiguity requirements. This has been written about in some local media sources and others. It complicates the way we are pursuing annexation now and actually makes a significant case for a larger annexation at this time and pursuing smaller, yes, incremental voluntary annexations in the future. So that's largely a byproduct of, of a shifting state regulatory landscape that's changing things kind of under our feet. Regarding an interlocal agreement with the county, it made me think of a past interlocal agreement we've had, specifically with regard to planning jurisdiction and planning for the areas outside of city boundaries in the area intended for annexation. I believe that interlocal agreement that existed for a while ran out in something like 2012 or eleven, and it is part of the reason that annexation is more compelling to me now. We lack a cohesive approach to development outside city boundaries. This city used to have a say in, and then no longer has to say in. So that interlocal, that past interlocal agreement that expired and was not renewed, I think was a good thing that helped urbanizing areas develop in line with city goals. But it's also become clear that without that agreement, we're running into some challenges of late, in particular, that induce sprawl, decisions made by the county, decisions to avoid mixed use on arterial streets where we might have commercial nodes and small nodal urban centers develop, something that our city plans support and that most, if not all, council members have supported in this body. We also saw the denial of a, of a project to bring in slightly more dense paired patio homes that would have added need, much-needed housing stock and more affordable housing stock, market rate affordability for our community that was denied out of some sort of appeal to rural character. But what that in fact does instead is induce sprawl and increase emissions because less people can live here, fewer people can live here. And you're going to put half as many homes on an area that is right outside current city boundaries. So when it comes to sprawl in particular, I think the city has a much better record at avoiding sprawl. And I think the county, frankly, in recent years in particular, has perpetuated sprawl. And that, that to me is part of my calculus in thinking about the future direction of our community. I think that's, that's mostly it. I have some other thoughts that may come up in other ordinances. I know I've been speaking for a while. So I'll stop there for this ordinance, but I'll mention, like my colleagues did, that this informs my thinking for the bulk of the proposals before us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Any other comments? Final comments from council members? Okay, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thanks. Okay, I'm unmuted. I just wanted to start by saying this is really my thoughts similar to last week, but just to kind of reiterate since we are spending the meeting, and I'm sure there's some new folks on here. This is, these are pretty much my thoughts in general for the annexation. And if I have specific things for another ordinance, I will speak to that as they come. I wanted to say first, thanks to everyone who's commented during these meetings and who has emailed. There have been so many, and I tend to read through them but don't always respond right away, and these past two weeks I've been responding and have just really had some wonderful conversations with folks. It's been helpful for me to read these different, different views on this, and the conversations I've had have been really helpful to learn more for me. So I really appreciate all of that. Just some quick bullets. As Councilmember Piedmont Smith said, you know, I agree that for areas that have waivers in exchange for sewer service, this is just the appropriate time to annex, and this was expected to happen at some point, and now happens to be that time. As I mentioned last week, this for me is not decided on purely financial basis, and I know a lot of folks see this as sort of like, and is this financially beneficial for me to be annexed? And a lot of people come out of that saying, no, it's not. But I look at this in a more holistic way. I consider density. I consider people using city amenities and infrastructure, like streets and sidewalks and parks, and, you know, going to events put on by the city or some, you know, festivals and all that good stuff. And I think Councilmember Flaherty just spoke to this as well. A big part of this for me is that I think expanding the city's ability to plan development and extend our comprehensive UDO is valuable in these areas and really important that we do that. I mean, we have, we have a wild housing shortage, housing shortage, the most expensive housing market in the state as we know. And I think it is just beneficial to people who want to live here and people who are already, like, living here but struggling, that we extend that UDO and really manage our development in ways that are helpful for folks looking for more affordable housing and needing to work here, and also that is climate-friendly as much as it can be. So that, those are my general thoughts on this process, and I will speak to different ordinances if I have specific comments. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Do we have any other final comments from council members? Okay, seeing none, are we ready for the question? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll in ordinance seventeen dash ten, Area 1B, Southwest B, Bloomington, annexation?
Yes, Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yep.
Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Sandberg?
No.
And Councilmember Rallo?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ordinance seventeen dash ten passes six, three, zero. I do believe we have more legislation ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance seventeen dash eleven be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Bowlin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes nine, zero. Will the clerk please read?
Sorry about that. Yes, ordinance seventeen eleven, an ordinance of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the City of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the City of Bloomington, Southwest Sea, Bloomington, annexation. The synopsis says as follows. Upon adoption, this ordinance would take various steps Upon adoption, this ordinance would take various steps necessary for the annexation of the Southwest Sea Bloomington Annexation area, which is depicted in Exhibit A and attached to this ordinance. In the course of proposing the annexation of this area, the city prepared a written fiscal plan for municipal annexation that describes the proposed provision of both non-capital and capital services to the annexation territory. It was initially adopted by a Resolution seventeen eighteen and amended by a Resolution twenty-one eleven. The approval of, of a further amendment to the written fiscal plan is scheduled for consideration at a common council session on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. And the common council will consider adoption of the proposed annexation. None on amendments which have been incorporated into ordinance seventeen eleven. At the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one regular session, the council adopted Amendment one to ordinance seventeen eleven, which changed various state references and signature lines to bring the proposed ordinance forward to twenty twenty-one so that it could be properly considered by the common council.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Some moves that ordinance seventeen dash eleven be adopted.
Second. Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Again, I don't believe there'll be a statement from city staff as representative or petitioner. So we will move to council for any questions on ordinance seventeen dash eleven. Okay, seeing none, we will now go to the public. If we have any public comments. If you intend to speak publicly, please use the raise hand function on Zoom. You can reach or get the raise hand function through the participants button. The reactions button or the more buttons. If you're on a mobile device, you ought to be able to reach us on star nine. Or you could send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom indicating publicly speak. And I will remind the public to please identify yourself and you'll have three minutes.
First up is Whitney Gates.
Yes, thank you. My name is Whitney Gates and I'm a lifelong Bloomington and Monroe County resident. With the exception of the four years I served my country as United States Naval Officer. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I attended the meeting last week and there are too many things about the whole process that disturb me to go into them all now. The biggest issue is the city not being able to provide services to the annexed areas, especially police protection. My understanding from the meeting last week is that we only have ninety-one out of a possible one hundred and five officers. So we're fourteen officers short and it's been this way for a number of years. With the annexation, the city's consultant projected that we'll need between twenty-three and thirty-five additional officers. Councilmember Piedmont Smith was quoted in the HT as saying, I think we have gotten to the point with our police department that it's an emergency situation. Retention is very poor, morale is very low, and these are dangerous factors when talking about people in the public safety profession. If we can't get up to the staffing levels now, think, thinking that we can hire more officers in a relatively short amount of time is dangerous thinking. Chief Decoff and his department, I think, do a great job under the circumstances they're given. Please don't burden them with more. There are many other reasons to vote no on the annexations, but until we can solve this one fundamental problem, are you due to vote no on these annexations? Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gates. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see at the moment, no. Yes, Margaret Clemens is up next.
Thanks for hearing me again. In addition to, this is Margaret Clemens. I'm a lifelong, I've been a resident of Bloomington and Monroe County since nineteen seventy-nine. I'd like to address some of the questions that were, or the comments that were directed at me by city council member Steve Volin and and Matt Flaherty. And one has to do with the sense of community. When I speak of community, I speak of it nostalgically. I don't speak of it in the, in the present tense. What we've known about community and what we have shared in our sense of building a, a community that is special is really right now under threat. The city has pursued development plans that have been against the will of the majority of the people who live in the city and certainly is not in concert with the vision held by the residents of the county for its own development. When you speak about extending services to the county, I'd like to remind people who may not have lived here so long that, you know, we are living in an area with five superfund sites. We had a huge amount of PCB contamination and the private wells that people owned and enjoyed and used for their own self-sufficiency were tainted due to the PCB contamination. And as a result, it was ordered that city water be, actually, it's the city water sources in Monroe County, but ironically named City of Bloomington Utilities. We work collaboratively to provide clean water to people throughout the city and the county. So I think you exaggerate a little bit too much in your overstatement of what it is the residents in the county enjoy of the city. In fact, we are enjoying it less and less. The city is pursuing an agenda that primarily serves the leisure class and the working class is being pushed further and further away. We're talking about annexation area one C here. One C is filled with a number of people in the, who qualify for affordable housing and who are in habitat for humanity housing and who are in subsidized housing. When you, when their taxes are going to be raised as a result of this annexation, they're going to be moving yet again to areas outside of Bloomington like Bedford, like Bloomfield, like Elletsville, like Mooresville, et cetera. So your, this process is further dividing our community. And finally, in the overexaggeration of services that you guys want to provide to people, I just say, please provide the services during the last annexation.
Ms. Clemens, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any additional requests for comment at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Return to council. I just saw a hand pop up. Just went away. Okay.
For anyone looking to use the raise hand function.
Ms. Jamie Ford, I see her hand. I'm sorry, Mr. Lucas. It's gone away again.
Jimmy Ford should now be able to unmute.
My apologies. I'm not used to Zoom meetings.
Did you, did you intend to speak?
Yes, please, if that's okay.
Oh, that's fine. Identify yourself for the record and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name's Jamie Ford. I already spoke, but just wanted to point out a couple of interesting comments that I heard. Councilmember, Councilmember Flaherty pointed out that the city has neglected to annex these areas to right-size the city so that things can grow. So I think it's interesting that if the city was that neglectful, how can we be sure that the city won't be neglectful in taking care of these newly annexed areas, especially because I'm not from here. So but based on testimony and stories from people that have lived here, the, the last annexation is, has still not been taken care of. So it seems like neglect is just maybe the, the, you know, the, how the city of Bloomington runs, you know, and I think that Councilmember Rosenbarger also had interesting comments. She was talking about how the lack of affordable housing, that's constituents that you already have. How can you ensure that, you know, the further annexation areas that you're, you're trying to adopt will also fall into that same pattern of higher prices for rent and houses? You know, again, if the constituents you already have are already suffering from this, what, how are we supposed to be sure that, you know, prices won't rise to the point where people have to move out of the cities the, the way they already speak of? And then just something I thought was kind of funny that Councilmember Piedmont Smith said that, you know, people who drive on the city streets and use the, attend city theaters and all that kind of stuff. Well, by that, by that argument, then people that visit Bloomington are, should be annexed as well, no matter where they come from, whether it's for an IU football game or road tripping or visiting family. I mean, that, this is the complex thing where, you know, yes, it's city roads, but I visit the county-funded public library. You know, I visit the lake, which was built by the Army Corps of Engineers and is maintained by the Indiana Department of Natural Resources that the city has its water treatments that are by, you know, I mean, this, so it's not just the City of Bloomington. It's, you know, it is a really complex issue where there are a lot of moving parts. And yeah, I just thought that was worth noting. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Do we, you see anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next up is Mary. Just a moment.
Yes, I'm here. Yes, this is, my name's, hello.
Hello, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. My name is Mary Born and I'm in section two of the annexation. I've lived in Indiana all my life and we moved down, my husband and I moved down here about five years ago and I had seen, I have seen a drastic change, a radical change downtown where people literally falling out of doorways and into the street, all drugged up. And now I'm not even, we're not even interested in going downtown to eat because it's, it's very uncomfortable. I'm very uncomfortable with that kind of environment. I've always, always has been, always have been. But anyway, an increase in our taxes would not provide us with anything in return for our, that much, over a thousand dollars in taxes after annexation. We have everything. I moved in unincorporated Monroe County because that's where I wanted to live. I don't like telling people how to live and I don't like people telling me how to live. And I don't appreciate the hostile annexation being taking place. And I, I question the whole shortage because I've heard that there really is not a housing shortage unless you foresee something. But I am also concerned about, you know, the police and the lack of police. And that's really about all I have to say right now is I'm disappointed in the annexation filings. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I believe so. Up next, if she's still interested in commenting, should be Rita Barrow, I believe.
Hi, my name is Rita Barrow and I'm a trustee of the county. You guys are not seeing all the messages because some people just can't get to you, mostly because of Zoom, because of COVID. So, you know, I don't know how you think these people can get to you to talk. It's unreasonable to be able to do this. Some people don't even have computers, let alone internet because they can't afford it. And you are now annexing them and the minimum average was, was eight hundred and sixty dollars. I don't want to take too much of your time because you're tired of hearing from me, but I'm going to tell you, you really needed to get out and talk to the residents and you didn't. I received an email the other day about a gentleman that was very concerned about this. Him and his wife was living very, very comfortable until she had medical issues. The medical expense took over the pension. Now he is living on one income and is really, really afraid he's going to lose his home. I don't see how you guys cannot see this. And speaking of using city streets, do you guys not go to Lake Monroe or Lake Lemon? Or the county fair? You guys use county roads too. We don't charge you. We don't come in and say, we're going to unannex you. So I don't see how you can do this. In addition to that, and I've spoke with Mr. Sims about this, the mayor himself told me and three other trustees, he is not required to sit, to provide city sewer, city lights or city sidewalks. So why are these individuals receiving for eight hundred and sixty plus every year? And you're using the two thousand seventeen annexation. Wait a minute here. He's going to be up for reelection possibly in twenty twenty-three. We can't vote till twenty twenty-four. Unexcusable, unexcusable. I thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Barrow. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jaclyn Porter.
Good evening, councilmen. This is Jackie Porter. I am a native Monroe County resident. I was born here and as were my daughters and we have all grown up here. Area for over fifty years. I've seen, as one of the other members mentioned, when we speak about community, then we are speaking in general about the whole area. We aren't just specifically talking about Bloomington. And I would point out as Rita Barrow did about, you know, the comments of, of residents driving on city streets versus county roads. I would challenge you to talk to people who live out in this area and ask them how often do they go downtown? Because I can tell you that if I need to go visit my mother on the east side of town, I don't drive through town. I drive on the county roads around the edge. When I, I work in a school that is out in the county and I drive on county roads almost, almost exclusively. I, I shop away from downtown. I eat away from downtown and we don't go downtown very often at all. So I would point that out that, you know, this, that the idea that county residents are using, you know, the city parks very often is perhaps not as often as you think. And if we do use the city parks, if we do use the city services, I would like to point out, we have to pay higher fees for those services because we don't pay the city taxes. And that is not something that I've heard as well. In addition, although I live in area four, I have lived in other parts of town. And I too would like to point out that in the last few years, as the police protection has gone down because we have been losing police, the homeless problem has gotten worse and worse. We've always had some, a few homeless here and they were chased out of right downtown near Indiana University and they now out of People's Park. And now they are, you know, slightly farther south, but not a lot next to downtown Kroger and, but they are all over the homeless people. And as you're considering these annexations and with rising taxes, you very well may be creating an extra issue by putting even more by putting even more people out of their homes. And where are they going to go?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Porter, you're, Ms. Porter, you've exceeded your time. I'm sorry. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any additional requests for comment at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing none, I will now return to council. Do we have any other questions from council members? We'll move to comments here shortly. Do we have any questions? Thank you. Seeing none, we will now move to final comments of council members. Do we have any final comments from council colleagues? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, so Area 1C is the one area that I I hesitated about for annexation because it is the Habitat for Humanity neighborhood and so there are people who are on the lower income levels who live there. But today I had a conversation with Wendy Goodlett, who is the Director of Habitat for Humanity. And she said that people in the Cedar Chase neighborhood, which is basically Area 1C. Well, first of all, they did sign remonstrance waivers and that was part of the agreement when the neighborhood was built. And secondly, if the residents there found it financially difficult to pay the increased property taxes, then they could appeal to Habitat for a renegotiation of their or a modification of their mortgage payments and Habitat would be open to to doing that. So I felt a lot better about the the annexation of this neighborhood after I spoke with Ms. Goodlett. And we'll be supporting this annexation area, just like the other ones, for the reasons I've already outlined. Now, I wanted to mention the the issue of police. I wanted to just say a few words on that. I I am concerned about our police department. I do think that we need to improve the compensation for our police officers. I want to state, though, that the contract with the police union, the Fraternal Order of the Police, is up for renewal next year. The mayor's administration has said that they're going to start negotiations early, so very soon in the coming, in the coming month or so. And I do expect that the compensation rate will be much improved as a result of these negotiations. So that by the beginning of 2023, we should be able to really scale up our recruitment of new officers and have have them in place by 2024. Now, I think that, you know, we're probably not going to hit the ground running with thirty new officers in January 1st, 2024. But I am confident we will be able to build up our force in order to provide public safety to areas in the annexation zones. So I will be supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any further final comments from council? Jeremy hands up, Councilmember Volin. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, there. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little put off by the idea that somehow sprawl follows annexation and people invoking the phrase rural character to define, to describe their neighborhoods. I might call them ex-urban, but I wouldn't call them rural. But I have been also hearing people saying how they've been here a very long time. And, you know, I think to fifty years ago, when Charlotte Zitlow and the Democratic slate that ran for city council in 1971, what they ran on, one of the big issues at the time was the almost complete lack of zoning law that allowed development to happen willy nilly, which included industrial development. The Republicans who ran the city, the mayor and the A-1 city council up until 1971, rubber stamped everything, hardly had. They hardly had discussion like this. They read by title only. They didn't even read by synopsis. They voted on it. They moved on to the next item. They, spot zoning was an issue in the 1971 election that exceptions would be made for every, any property that wanted an exception. And one of the the other complaints at the time was that the lack of restrictions on development included industrial development, including all the industry that would come to pollute the community. We just heard news in the past week or two that three of those sites created by Westside Industries that carved out exceptions for themselves before they were strong enough laws to bring them in line. They've only now been remediated enough to be removed from the Superfund Sites list. It's 2021. Had there been a government in place, whether at the city or the county level, that had the foresight to anticipate the potential environmental destruction that such industries would cause, you know, we might have avoided some of those problems. People who visit Bloomington contribute through an innkeeper's tax, through a food and beverage tax, which roughly corresponds to the lesser impact that they have being here, less than permanent residents. But, I mean, all these arguments are devolving into straightforward, you know, political arguments. People who are concerned about the management and mismanagement of the city as they characterize it, the remedy is at the ballot box whenever they get a chance to vote. But right now, they don't have a chance to vote at all. And the process for annexing long, long precedes this annexation effort. The city has grown through annexation for a century. State law has covered how annexation is to be conducted and they're very, as we've, as many people pointed out, very strict about it. The remedy for many of these complaints is at the ballot box, not just at the city level, but at the state level. If annexation, if the way that annexation is to be conducted is a problem, it's it's, to say that it's not democratic is to say that the state is not democratic. But the annexation laws were passed through a democratic process. Whether or not they're unfair or not, that's the the remedy. But lastly, I would say, I would like someone to show me an area in the country, any area that has houses and residents that hasn't changed in fifty years. I'd like people to ask themselves, where would, where exactly they would have housed the fifty thousand people net who have increased the size of this community in the past fifty years, where they should have been located, what kind of housing they should have lived in? You know, we do all these things by fits and starts, bit by bit, piece by piece. This is one of the biggest pieces we've ever added. But we, you know, the communities are are built over time and they do grow and they do change. And I would encourage everyone to consider that no community stands still, no community is static. Thank you.
Councilmember Volin, do we have any other final comment from council members? Councilmember Rala?
Just on the topic of police protection, I just, I cannot see it. I don't care if a contract is coming up soon. There's just simply not sufficient time to build up the force that we need to take on these areas. And I think that it's just stands to reason. We we are in a deficit right now in terms of sworn officers. There is simply not sufficient time to add enough officers to cover the geographic areas that we are taking on. So therefore, by adding these areas and expanding the city boundaries, we will dilute the police that we already have to cover these areas. It's very, it's 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 a given as far as I can see. Even if we were to adopt an increase in base salary immediately, there's, it takes considerable time to recruit enough officers. So and and keep in mind, this is a strained police force that is now having to work mandatory overtime in order to keep minimal staffing levels. So this is, yes, it's an elephant in the room. It's not being addressed. And by expanding the city boundaries right now, this is what we're doing. I don't, I don't think there's any way around it. The rest is, to me, wishful thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rala. Any further comments from council members? Okay, seeing none, are we ready for the question? Seeing no further comments, will the clerk please call the roll on ordnance seventeen dash eleven, Area 1C, Southwest C, Bloomington?
Yes, Councilmember Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rala?
No.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbacher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Ordinance seventeen dash eleven is about six, three, zero. I do believe we have more legislation ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty?
Move that ordnance seventeen dash twelve be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Okay.
Thank you. It's been properly moved. Ordinance seventeen dash twelve? I think I got the right, seventeen dash twelve. Be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Mr. President, I believe we still need a roll call.
I do apologize. Roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll? Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbacher?
Yeah.
And Scambolory?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. I have too many papers again. Continue to try to keep us on track. Will the clerk please read?
Okay. Ordinance seventeen twelve, an ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the city of Bloomington, Southeast Bloomington Annexation. The synopsis is as follows. Upon adoption, this ordinance would take various steps necessary for the annexation of the Southeast Bloomington. Wow, I just lost that, so sorry. Southeast Bloomington Annexation Area, which is depicted in Exhibit A and attached to this ordinance. In the course of proposing the annexation of this area, the city prepared a written fiscal plan for the municipal annexation that describes the proposed provision of both non-capital and capital services to the annexation territory and was initially adopted via Resolution seventeen nineteen and amended via Resolution twenty one twelve. The approval of a further amendment to the written fiscal plan is scheduled for consideration at a common council session on September fifteenth, twenty twenty one, when the common council will consider adoption of the proposed annexation. Note on amendments which have been incorporated into Ordinance seventeen twelve. At the May nineteenth, twenty twenty one regular session, the council adopted Amendment One to Ordinance seventeen twelve, which changed various state references and signature lines to bring the proposed ordinance forward to twenty twenty one so it could be properly considered by the common council. At the August thirty first, twenty twenty one special session, the council adopted the following amendments. Amendments two and three, which removed identified parcels from the Southeast Bloomington Annexation Area. And Amendment Five, which added an empowerment fund and corresponding advisory board for the Southeast Bloomington Annexation Area.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Flaherty.
Move that ordnance seventeen dash twelve be adopted?
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Before we move, I'm sorry, Mr. Rucker.
Oh, I'm sorry, President Sims, I may have turned my camera on prematurely. I'm just here to speak on Amendment Six.
Okay, thank you. Return to Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I'd like to move that Amendment Six to Ordinance seventeen twelve be adopted.
Amendment Six to Ordinance seventeen dash twelve has been properly moved. And second, okay, will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry.
Mr. President, well, well, we don't need a vote on introduction for the for the amendment, so.
I know, just go with, well, thank you. And I will say this, this is largely a housekeeping amendment, if I am not mistaken. And without further ado, I do believe Mr. Rucker is here to speak on that amendment.
I'll just mention, if it's okay, Mr. President, briefly, that I I'm sponsoring this amendment on behalf of the administration. And a quick note that it was in last week's packet for the special session, but didn't make it into this week's packet. I believe the meeting host has shared a link to that in in the chat function of of Zoom. But again, that that amendment was included in last week's packet. That was the beginning of this special session. And I'll let Mr. Rucker present on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Michael Rucker, City Attorney for the City of Bloomington. President Sims is exactly right. This is simply a housekeeping amendment. Amendment Six was necessitated by the adoption of Amendments Two and Three, which modified which parcels were part of Annexation Area Two. And therefore, we had to modify the maps and the legal descriptions for Area Two, as well as update the acreage total. So this is just a clerical cleanup amendment based on those changes that were previously made by the council on August thirty first.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Flaherty and Mr. Rucker. Do we have any council questions on Amendment O Six for the sponsor or for administration? Okay, thank you. Seeing none. We'll now go to the public. Are there any questions on Amendment Six of Ordinance seventeen dash twelve? I see none. We'll go back to the council. There's any questions or comments on Amendment Six seventeen dash twelve? Okay, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll for Amendment O Six of Ordinance seventeen dash twelve?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbacher?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes. Thank you. Amendment Six to Ordinance seventeen dash twelve passes nine zero. We'll now move to council questions, if any on Ordinance seventeen dash, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, seventeen. Amendment Six on Ordinance seventeen dash twelve. And we will now move to council comments on Ordinance seventeen dash twelve as amended. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, President Sims. I I wondered if perhaps Mr. Hunger can offer me some or some in the public, some information on Area Two. If it goes to a remonstrance, and I know that's a future thing, but can you say it was the eligibility of Area Two with regard to density subdividing it and zoning? What is it the eligibility based on? How is it not ineligible because of either of those three items?
Yeah, and I don't have the specific numbers in front of me. I would say Area Two is also, would also be a hybrid approach in terms of demonstrating that it's urbanized. I think the numbers show that it was also, I think, over fifty percent wavered and over ninety or, I'm sorry, seventy-five percent developed. So I think Area Two is an area that we would defend a remonstrance on grounds that it's still urbanized under a hybrid approach, similar to Areas One A and One B.
So you're saying that you may be able to defend that the density is three point oh or more because some of it has been zoned business, commercial, or industrial?
Correct, and based off of the residential areas.
Okay, thank you for that, and if I can ask one more question is one of the things I struggled with in all these ordinances is how do we, what's the fairly calculated equitable exchange for the, if you can speak to that, for us in Area Two annexing them? What is that fairly calculated equitable exchange? How do we view that?
I think what you're probably referring to, again, Steve Unger, outside Annexation Council, what you're probably referring to is the language in statute that talks about that every annexation should include terms and conditions that are fairly calculated to make the annexation equitable. Yeah, and there's lots of ways that that's accomplished in annexations. One way is through the provision of services post-annexation as outlined in the fiscal plan, which we've done here, is also, you know, that statute specifically references one of the tools to make an annexation fairly calculated to be equitable is delaying the effective date of the annexation. You've done that here. We've done things like including empowerment funds, even where it's a close question of an empowerment fund is required. So I think that, you know, based off of how that statute is interpreted and and, you know, the provisions of service post-annexation, the plan that's outlined in the fiscal plan, I do think that all of these annexations meet that statutory requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Unger. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Flaherty?
I had a procedural question, but it's been resolved, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from council? Or net seventeen dash twelve as amended? Okay. We will now go to the public for any public comment on Area Seventeen Dash Twelve as amended. And I will remind everyone that please use the raised hand function in Zoom. You can reach it through the participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons. If you're on a mobile device, you ought to be able to reach us on star nine, or you can send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. And I will remind the public to please identify yourself when called upon, and you will have three minutes. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you. First is Bart Farrell.
Hello, my name is Bart Farrell. I've spoken before. None of these ordinance should be approved. Here's why. The mayor says his administration is open and upfront about annexation, yet he had no city council nor county inputs prior to announcing the annexation in twenty seventeen. That trend continued when he announced the resumption this past April. He should have held multiple outreach programs, meetings this time around. He offered a single public hearing on August fourth via Zoom. That was all the public needed because the city met the minimum requirements in twenty seventeen. Yet critical changes since then include new laws affecting sewer, fire services, and waivers. The city council and city staff personnel turned over. There was arrival of thousands of new city and county residents since twenty seventeen. How can anyone think these changes were not worthy of multiple outreach meetings? Is this ordinance being rushed simply because there is a likelihood the state legislature will eliminate unilateral annexations in Indiana? The timing is terrible. It couldn't be worse, given the impact of COVID in the community. To try to force annexation through during this pandemic shows a complete lack of empathy for the community. Fix the broken city infrastructure before taking on more. If the recent flood and resulting property damage and loss of life isn't a wake-up call, I don't know what is. The city has unresolved ongoing police issues with both manning and funding. If you can't provide security and protection for what you have now, why would you want to expand before the problem is fixed? The waiver issue is still not resolved, and its resolution is critical to both city and areas wanting to remonstrate. It makes no sense to proceed with something so critical to both sides still undecided. Issues and conflicts between the city and the county need to be resolved before moving forward, which would only exacerbate these problems. This intentionally makes the situation worse. The issue of paying taxes before being able to vote needs to be fixed. This is taxation without representation. How can any elected official support this? Lastly, try keeping your promises to the areas previously annexed before looking to add more territory. Why would anyone believe what you are promising now? As stated in the city annexation website, the ultimate authority to approve annexation rests with the city council. These ordinances should not go through. Please use your common sense. Listen to what we have been saying. Do your job and stop annexation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Mark and Diane Riggins, and I'll just note if there are multiple people using the same device that would like to speak, please let us know when your comment comes up so that we can take both comments. And I'm also hearing from some folks that they weren't aware that there is a countdown timer being displayed. That may be based on how you've got your own view set up, but we do have a countdown timer to help folks who are wanting to time their comments. So again, Mark and Diane Riggins should now be able to unmute.
Thank you for allowing me the time to talk. I'm Mark Riggins, and I'm a lifelong resident. For me, that's sixty-seven years of the Monroe County area. And I've lived in the Clear Creek neighborhood of the proposed annexation for two, I'm sorry, the proposed annexation Area Two for thirty years. My wife and I are one of hundreds of residents in Area Two that have signed petition pages indicating we will remonstrate against annexation if the proposal goes forward. Some of the reasons we are against and concerned about this proposal are, even though the laws of the state of Indiana allows for involuntary annexation doesn't make it right, this process being used is creating a burdensome and adversarial relationship between those in the affected areas and the members of the city government trying to get this implemented. We would seem to make, it would seem to make more sense to allow persons affected to be able to vote on their requested areas to be annexed into the city rather than be forced to remonstrate if they oppose the annexation. Not having the right to vote for anyone that is in control of this property is taxation without representation. We moved into this Clear Creek area outside the city because we enjoyed the rural environment and the freedom it allows. We do not need any of the additional services that are being offered as part of being in the city. In particular, and as an example, we do not want trash pickup. In the city council discussions on the previous Heritage Woods exclusion, one of the council members mentioned that she doubted that anyone actually took care of their own trash, but probably used the service. I can say that my wife and I are one of many county residents that use the pay-per-use trash bag system that we find preferable to the trash bin collection system used by the cities. We work very hard to store it all as recyclable materials into our own bins and deliver these materials along with three to four orange bags of trash and mud to the county recycling sites. The city system doesn't seem to reward this type of effort, so we would rather have the paper bags trash option if we are adopted by the city. In addition to the points above, I believe this proposal contains an area that's too large, especially Area Two, and the city is taking on far too much responsibility too quickly. I would therefore ask this annexation process be canceled in favor of more reasonable size and time one, and also one that allows voting representation from those citizens affected. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Matt and Maddie Andry.
Hi, good evening. There's actually two of us. We would both like to speak, so if that would work out okay?
I think that'll work out fine. First person has three minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay, my name is Maddie Andry. Like many people who have spoken here this evening, I was born in Bloomington. I've gone to school here my whole life. And so I am part of this community, and my biggest concern is very much falls on the shortage of police officers. The reason I wanted to speak up on this is I was actually just accosted in Bloomington, probably assaulted. The assault lasted about twenty minutes. It happened about, what, three weeks ago? And there was no police officer in sight. I have two small children, and you are sitting here telling us that you are gonna annex our city in our area into the city where you can't even serve a city, and I was downtown Bloomington, where I remember being here where police officers used to patrol that area, and I felt safe growing up in this community, and I no longer feel safe here. I was accosted for twenty minutes straight in plain sight, and nobody was there to help me. And as a woman in this community, that is just not right. And I have two small children that go in, that live in this community, that go to school in this community, and I absolutely am against that you guys are gonna take the city limits and make them out further, and you are not gonna support our safety in this involvement, and I just cannot stand by that. The other thing that I wanted to speak to is that you guys are talking about using city roads and going to the city theater and going to the restaurants. Cities thrive on tourism. So if you're gonna sit here and say that you've got to annex us in so that you guys, that we pay for those rights, big cities like Indianapolis, Chicago, all of these other cities, they thrive off of their tourism. So I would love for you guys to explain to me how this is any different than somebody from the county who goes down, and by the way, I'm an avid local shopper. So if there is anybody who is a mom-and-pop store, a restaurant that is owned by somebody in this local community, I will go there and I will shop there. I would rather do that than order on Amazon so that our local community can thrive. So for you to sit there and say that to me, to us as citizens in Monroe County, is insulting. It is absolutely insulting because I've supported this community for over forty years, living here. So I beg to differ. The city is thriving off the tourism of the rural areas, and I live in a rural area in Bloomington because I do have small children, and I believe in allowing my children to go outside and play and thrive so that they have a yard, so that they can ride their bikes, and I don't have to be scared that somebody's going to abduct my children. And now you're sitting here telling me that you want to put me into an environment where I won't have police protection for myself and my children after I was just accosted three weeks ago. Thank you so much. I appreciate the time. I'm gonna pass it over to my husband.
Thank you very much for your comments. You have three minutes, Mr. Andry.
Hi, I'm Dr. Matt Andry. I'm a family physician here in town, and I've been in practice for twenty years. I lived in the city limits for fifteen years, and when Maddie and I got married, we chose to move out of the city limits. A large part of that reason was for a sense of feeling more safe with our family. And I have to say, particularly Mr. Volan, Ms. Piedmont Smith, it's really, really insulting to me with the suggestion that as a physician who served the people of this community for this length of time, that I am somehow not a member of this community, a full member of this community because I happen to choose to have my residence outside of it. How dare you? That's really not cool. I don't believe that you should take on areas that you cannot service now. That is irresponsible. I don't understand how, whatever the plan you think is going forward, you can't do the job now. Why in the world do you think you should add more? This is irresponsible. It's not right. Please take care of what you have already and let those of us who have had to manage to survive without being part of the city limits continue to do so. You're offering nothing that I need or don't have already, that I'm not already paying a premium for. You're not giving me anything except a higher tax bill. So, and the services that you are providing for the places you're responsible for now are completely inadequate. I don't want to be part of that for my residence. I am part of it with my business. I chose to be so. I participate. But this is not okay for you to make these decisions, and then to, again, sit there and offhandedly suggest that because I choose to live outside, that I'm somehow not doing my share for this community. That is not necessary, and it should not be part of the way you're making a decision around this. Sorry, getting a little keyed up. I appreciate very much that we have a democratic process that we can be able to be a part of and share this information and our perspective on this. But I made these decisions on purpose to do what I thought was right for my family. And the fact that you are doing this, it is taxation without representation. You cannot provide services for us and my family when you do this annexation, and to do this in the middle of a pandemic, when there isn't a completely restricted ability to communicate, it's like a middle-of-the-night cash grab, and I cannot believe that you can do this in good conscience. And may the right karma fall on us all, and I hope you make the right decision, and thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Dr. Andry. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jamie Ford.
Hello, I'm Jamie Ford, once again, and honestly, I'm kind of really mad right now. Councilman Volan stated that if we don't like this process, well, then we just need to go to the ballot, you know, go to the ballots and go vote. That's part of the problem, and that just proves that this council is not listening. That if we were allowed to vote in this next coming election, then, hey, that's fine, but the way the timing with this annexation is going is there will be an election in November two thousand twenty-three. Annexation takes place January first, two thousand twenty-four. We pay taxes for, what, a couple of years, and then the next election that we will finally officially be able to vote in is in two thousand twenty-seven. I mean, how can you sit there and just say, oh, yeah, just go to the, just go vote, just go to the ballot? Yeah, oh, okay. When are you finally gonna allow us to do that? And that's part of the problem with this process, is the fact that it wasn't amended to take that into account of the fact that, you know, we still, even after, you know, as Councilwoman Piedmont Smith said, you know, wants us to be fully part of the community and wants us to vote, yet we still aren't going to be able to for another two years or so after this annexation takes place. And by that same argument, Councilman Volan said that if we find this process undemocratic, then we find the state undemocratic. Well, then, how does the council and the mayor feel about the law that removes the waivers? I mean, is the state democratic in that sense? Do they have a problem with the democracy that the state is pushing there? I honestly, I welcome your comments. I hope to hear you respond directly to what I've said. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next, I believe there are two speakers from the screen named JG Donatello. They shouldn't be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Thank you, council members. My name is John Donatello. I reside at forty-three ten South Norwood Drive in Sterling Woods, which is in Area Two. My wife would like to speak after I do, so it pleases the council. Early in my career, I am a degree civil engineer and worked as a city engineer on the western edge of Chicago, in the suburbs of Chicago. So I understand annexation and planning necessary to accommodate growing community. That's more, I know what it takes to plan for infrastructure and more importantly, budget responsibly. Anticipated in numerous planning meetings, budget meetings, all of which were anticipated for growth for the community. And as over the years, job opportunities have taken us elsewhere around the And as over the years, job opportunities have taken us elsewhere around the country. We've lived several places. We've seen rapid rural development and urbanization before, and that's the reason why we decided to retire in Bloomington. We decided to flee big city problems associated with urban sprawl, increasing taxes and high cost of living. Years ago, our Sterling Woods developer provided all of the infrastructure in our subdivision, including sewers and wastewater. And obviously, the homeowners already incurred this cost when they purchased their original property or in later years when they bought their homes. In our view, Area Two should not be considered an area for development. Since we've been here, we've seen multiple family housing projects go up all over Bloomington. These megaplexes with higher-density housing units come with massive parking lots and city lighting, and commercial corridors often follow. More rapid development and urbanization means more concrete and asphalt surfaces with ensuing watershed issues, especially in areas such as ours with deep ravines. The increasing amounts of water moves swiftly and rises more rapidly during rainfall. I've come to learn that promises made by the city are often not promises kept. Finally, job creation and employment opportunities in the Bloomington area have not kept pace with the housing construction. There are far more multiple housing units in Bloomington than there are people in Bloomington. Both commercial and rental properties set off today. And of course, even with COVID exacerbating the issue. Based on current demographics, Area Two does not need further development or expansion. Less-than-robust population growth does not justify this huge land grab nor speeding it or acquiring it. I urge you to use logic and common sense and responsibly help more to the annexation area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. The second person is ready. Please proceed. She'll have three minutes.
I am Jean Donatello. I also live at forty-three ten South Norwood Drive. My husband and I have lived here five years. And while not knowing a single soul in the Bloomington area, we elected to move here from out of state to retire. We wanted to buy a home out of the city and close, and chose our home in Sterling Woods specifically because of the large and private lot, the deep setback from the street, and for the beautiful surrounding landscape with plentiful towering trees. Although we were almost six miles from Bloomington City Center, we have supported the downtown and the city of Bloomington in many ways and with many dollars. We know that the character of a community is everything, especially when you want people to move here, retire here, stay here and thrive here. Bloomington has been touted online and in the press as unique and affordable city with charm and character. That's what draws people like my husband and I to retire here and become involved citizens. Bloomington's appeal to us has changed in just a few short years, especially now that the proposed annexations are about to occur. It won't be long before our area becomes part of that urban sprawl we've been talking about with overdeveloped lots, high-density housing, thus losing the very charming character that has made Bloomington and the surrounding areas a place to be proud of and to enjoy. Increased population urbanization of Area Two will certainly be the end of the low-density rural aesthetic that we and the visitors have enjoyed. We believe that the majority of Area Two citizens feel the same because, council members, you may not have heard many citizens speaking at the microphones to speak as to their opposition of the proposed annexation at the public hearings last, at the public hearings at last week's meeting or tonight. But it is these silent citizens' actions which are speaking volumes. More than five thousand of us have signed petitions against this massive land grab, and those same silent property owners are organizing now. And we are prepared to remonstrate because our properties and the character of our communities are worth the fight. We ask you to please slow down this annexation process for consideration, and I urge you to vote no to the annexation of Area Two. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Lucas, but before we do that, I'll remind the public that if you intend to speak publicly, you can use the raise hand function in Zoom, and you can get there by, or through the participants button, the reactions button, and/or the more button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. If you're on a mobile device, you ought to reach us, be able to reach us using star nine, or you can send a note to our meeting post via the chat function on Zoom to indicate that you'd like to speak. And I will ask you again to please identify yourself before speaking, and you'll have three minutes. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Julie Thomas.
Good evening, council members. Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioner. I am, was sad to hear the comments last week during the meeting about using the roads and things of the city, and I, I hope that you did not intend to disinvite people downtown to work and to eat and to shop. But that sure is what it sounded like, and it made me wonder if I needed to shell out to Brown County and Johnson County as I drive up to Franklin to teach at the college there. Clearly, I don't. But here's the thing. Whether somebody is intended to be annexed, a property is intended to be annexed, or you're a resident of the city or you're a resident of the county outside the annexation area, this will impact you. We are concerned about the potential annual revenue loss of two point seven million dollars to Monroe County Government. Monroe County Community School Corporation will lose four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars a year. Monroe County Public Library, two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars a year. And a five hundred thousand dollar annual loss is projected for the Monroe County Fire Protection District. These are necessary and vital services that make our community what it is, and no, there is nothing you can do about it except vote no. There is a great deal of anxiety and anger in this community. We've met with a lot of these folks, and the commissioners have come to the decision, which is unusual, to speak out as a board against annexation. That anger is palpable, and, and these remonstrances, when they happen, it's going to be, it's going to leave a bad taste in everyone's mouth. And successful or not, it's not going to be good for city-county relationships. I will note for the record, that was a great question that was asked, how many waivers are there? According to my back-of-the-envelope sketch and notes, in Area Two, there are less than ten percent of Area Two parcel owners have a valid waiver. I'm following state statute here, but less than ten percent do. So again, you're setting this up for a lawsuit and/or a really bad feeling among residents of the community. This is a hurtful, hurtful thing. I know that's not what you intend, so please vote no. Thanks for listening to me.
You're welcome. Thank you for commenting. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Jenny Noble Cuchara.
Good evening. This is Jenny Noble Cuchara. I'm assuming my audio is okay?
Yes, you're sounding fine, and you have three minutes.
Great. Thanks so much for having me. I won't take my whole three minutes. I just wanted to mention that I feel that the voice of those of us in Area Two who welcome annexation has not yet been heard, and I would like to be that voice. I've lived in Monroe County since nineteen ninety-six. I have rented. I have owned homes. I spent most of my time in a small home in Unionville. And when I moved into the Clear Creek area a few years ago, I was thrilled to be able to access all of the city's parks, the Clear Creek Trail, the Beeline Trail, and everything that Bloomington has to offer. When the annexation is, was on the heels of, of almost going through, last week, I sat and patiently waited. I can't wait for the benefits that will come with it, and I find it disheartening that I have neighbors around me who are just as positive and just as vocal within our neighborhood, but have yet to get on a Zoom or write to you. And I just wanted to represent people who are looking forward to becoming part of the city and the benefits that the city has to offer. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next, and the last request to comment that I see at the moment is the screen name Owner.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Okay. I'm sorry I came up Owner, but my name is Dirk Alton, and I just wanted to make some brief comments. Annexation. My wife and I live in the county in the proposed annexation Area Two in the Cedar Springs subdivision. And in listening to prior Zoom discussions about annexation, the trajectory of where the city council is going is pretty evident and also unfortunate as my wife and I oppose annexation. However, if annexation is finally approved, we ask the council to suspend implementation for, let's say, two to three years just to enable county government and residents to make budgetary adjustments and for the city to hire more employees. My wife and I also are very concerned about the increase in taxes. We are fortunate, we can absorb a sharp spike up in property tax. However, some residents, as Margaret Clements and other people pointed out previously, some residents may not be so fortunate and are living under very tight budgets. If the council does go forward with annexation with no delay, I ask the council and city staff to not hit taxpayers with what I would call an all-at-once tax tsunami. Please consider a stepped-up series of tax increases over just, let's say, a period of three to four years. Stepped up meaning, of course, gradual. And once again, I just, I urge the council to please vote this annexation proposal down for Area Two. And that's the end of my discussion.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lucas, who do we have next?
Next is Bruce Myers.
Are you able to hear me okay?
I sure am, Mr. Myers. Can you identify yourself? You'll have three minutes.
I'm Bruce Myers. Thank you for giving me some time. You know, there, there are lots of things being said at this meeting and in previous meetings, and you know, truth be told, a lot of repetition, right? A lot of concern about police protection, a lot of concern about other things. I think the thing that I find myself wondering in considering this action is is, is the council. Because it's my understanding, and perhaps this is my misunderstanding, that the council is, is a representation of the people. And I would tell you that in listening to this, there, there have been a few comments in favor. There have been a lot of comments opposed for, for a variety of reasons. And there have been petitions signed, opposed. There is clearly a very large contingent opposed to this action. And yet, I, I see the council, I hear the council consider these things, but by and large are moving ahead in, in, in the direction opposite of what it appears to be the majority of the people's wishes are. That's where I'm struggling. As, as a resident of this area for many years, I enjoy this community. I live where I do because I want to live where I do and, and have enjoyed how it is. I'm not opposed to change. I'm not opposed to things happening and progressing and progressive things. So, so I'm not here to say I'm opposed to progress. I'm opposed to hearing the will of the people and what appears to be a council that's acting opposite of the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. What do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Colby Wicker.
Hello, council. Can you hear me okay?
I sure can.
Hi there. My name's Colby Wicker. I'm the president of County Residents Against Annexation. I want to apologize for being late tonight. I had a work obligation. But I am, I'm back here now. I, I want to echo what Mr. Myers said about the representation issue. I know that, that all the people in the annexation areas by definition are not your constituents currently, but if your plan is to go through, they will be your constituents, and I think it's important to hear them and to hear their concerns. And I know that you've tried to do your best, and I, I honestly believe with my heart that you guys are trying, that you guys believe that you're doing the right thing for the community. But after talking with people, I know that it's just going to hurt so, so many people. I, I, I want to raise the issue of, of course, this is the largest physical area that we're bringing in. How are we going to police those, those areas? We, we have all those issues that we've talked about over and over and over. I, I just find it hard to believe that in over the course of about three years, we're going to be able to get enough police officers to be able to adequately service those, those areas, and maybe that should be a message for why we should slow this annexation down a little bit. I, I want to remind all of you, of course, none of you were on the council at the time, I, I don't believe, but that, that the last annexation went through, but we didn't used to use a, a real involuntary system, and if we go back and we look at the records, we see that there are very few remonstrations because the city went door-to-door, and they convinced people that annexation was good for them and for their community. Instead, the inverse is happening now. I'm going door-to-door, and I'm leading individuals who are going door-to-door to collect signatures to say why we don't want this. And I would urge the council to go back to the system that they had before and to sell this to the people. And I, I think when we, when we compare the numbers from the last annexation and their remonstrance numbers and our remonstrance numbers this time, I, I think that there's gonna be a vast, vast difference there. Because if, if, if we were to sit down and to ask the people what they wanted, put it on a ballot, for example, I can almost guarantee you that it would not have a majority of the people. I can tell you that people will be, will, will be hurt by, by this move also. I, I worked the county fair earlier this, this summer, and I spoke with hundreds of individuals, and I've spoken with hundreds more on the phone over email and at their doors. I, I, I met a lady who, who came, and her, her and her husband are going to see a, a very big tax increase of, it was sixty-six percent. I called and confirmed that with her this afternoon. And I, I, I just really want you guys to know that this can really have a real effect on, on, on real people, and I want us to take that in, in, into account. Please save the community this battle. It, it, it won't be good for our unity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Susan Brackney.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
I sure can. Can you identify yourself? And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Susan Brackney. I've lived in parts of the city proper and in parts of the county since nineteen ninety. And I wanted to say that Councilmember Volin makes a great point about people who are concerned about the management or mismanagement of the city. He said, "The remedy is at the ballot box whenever they get a chance to vote, but right now they don't have a chance to vote at all." Even if those folks in Area Two and the other areas are annexed, they will not be able to vote for the office of mayor or for the members of the city council until years later. As I understand it, the city council areas will be undergoing redistricting in the near future. It seems only fair that future Area Two annexes and annexes from each successfully annexed area should be able to serve on the Redistricting Advisory Commission. There was a very thoughtful column in the B-Square Bulletin to that effect, and I encourage you to read it. But even if that suggestion falls on deaf ears, people in Area Two Um, but even if that suggestion falls on deaf ears, people in area two and the other areas have some additional recourse. Once the dust has settled and the redistricting is complete, we'll know which of these council members will be seeking reelection. And although those in area two may not be able to vote for or against these council members as they see fit, they can work to find suitable challengers and put their time, energy and funds into those challengers' campaigns. Uh, members of the public have predominantly opposed ordinance seventeen twelve and the other annexation ordinances for many valid reasons. And I just urge you all to really consider what all these people have to say. Thanks very much. I'll see the rest of my time.
Thank you so much for your comments. Do we have anyone else? Mr. Lucas, so you can see?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Saying done, we'll now move to council and I believe we're in final comment period um, for ordinance seventeen dash twelve, um, as it was amended this evening. Councilmember Rollo.
Well, my general comments still apply, but I will also add that uh, I, I think it is demonstrated that annexation does imply uh, extension of city services and therefore uh, to undeveloped land and, and this will on the periphery induce sprawl. Uh, that was recognized in the growth policies plan of two thousand and two regarding areas that is under consideration in area two. It was at the time, speaking of uh, a city boundary um, that would, wouldn't pass, uh, wouldn't go further east than the east fork of the, of Jackson Creek for that reason. Um, this formed a, a natural barrier. Uh, and sprawl uh, was to be discouraged in this area, these areas because this is, of course, in the Lake Monroe watershed. And we know that Lake Monroe is already stressed, uh, especially seasonally like right now. Um, siltation is still occurring, algal blooms and so forth. So, uh, good to discourage sprawl in these areas, uh, good reason to vote down area two. And um, it, this is really working contrary to our stated goal for decades of compact urban form. There are areas in the city to, to develop. We can densify further. Um, and um, so I would urge my colleagues to vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rollo. Do we have any other final comments on ordinance seventeen dash twelve? Councilmember Flaherty?
Uh, yeah, just a, a brief comment that with all respect to Mr. Rollo, I think the exact opposite of almost everything you just said. The development that the county has led for um, decades now is in fact sprawl. A gentleman from Sterling Woods spoke. The density of a subdivision like that with no, with no disrespect to the folks who live there or choose to live there, that's what we've built, that's what we have, that's fine. Cul-de-sac, uh, poorly connected, low density uh, suburban developments outside the city of Bloomington, that is by definition sprawl. That's what county government has been pursuing and is continues to pursue. We have the highest per capita emissions for um, both building, energy use and transportation of any country in the world. That is a function directly of our land use policies in this country over the last seventy years. Uh, and the city, as compared to the county, has substantially better, although far from perfect, uh, land use policies when it comes to compact urban form and avoiding sprawl. So again, just a, a complete opposite perspective, uh, I think you would find that almost all urban planners, certainly urban planners that have been trained um, in the era of climate change would agree with me on that. Uh, this is my field professionally. I spend a lot of time reading the research, reading what the experts in housing policy, climate emissions, land use have to say about this. It's, it's a longer conversation, but uh, I just wanted to share that out of an interest of, of opposing sprawl, I have kind of the opposite view. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other final comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Scandalarri?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate um, tonight's discussion as I have every other discussion on this subject. Um, I want to follow up on the things a couple of my colleagues have said and then just offer some additional observations. First around some of the myths surrounding um, annexation, Councilmember Piedmont Smith spoke, spoke of all the myths swirling around annexation and how it will and will not impact residents. Those myths have proved to be persistent and stubborn. And I don't know of any way to dispel those myths other than to be consistent and persistent in sharing accurate information. We've heard the comment, "I didn't know my property had a waiver when I bought it," or "I wasn't consulted when the developer of our neighborhood bought a waiver." Councilmember Volan spoke eloquently on this issue. Having purchased and sold several homes over the years, I understand the volume of information and unfamiliar information at that that needs to be conveyed and understood during a purchase. And I also understand my obligation as a buyer to ask questions and to hold my real estate brokers and attorneys accountable for sharing that information with me. The notion that we're not listening, we've heard that again tonight. I continue to reject the suggestion that our decision to move forward in this process must simply mean that we're not listening. And we've heard it again, we've heard it almost every time. Most, if not everyone on council has had scores of conversations with residents of these areas that are being considered for annexation. We've discussed annexation at five of my last six constituent meetings. I've attended the county commissioner sponsored meeting on annexation at Perry Clear Creek Fire Station. And I've met with multiple neighborhood groups in areas intended for annexation. Most, if not all of my colleagues have done the same. Again, I reject the suggestion that our decision to move forward just means we're not listening. One thing I've heard that no one has commented on so far is that we shouldn't be making such decisions during COVID. I'll mention, but I will refrain from stressing that annexation decisions would likely have been made and the process completed in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen had the state legislature not intervened unconstitutionally. More broadly than that, though, we still have an obligation to move forward with government business, even during a pandemic. We review and vote on ordinances. We vote this council has approved tax abatements. We debated extensively and ultimately passed an updated UDO. We've authorized the issuance of bonds. We continue to bait, debate and vote on city budgets, arguably the most important document we produce. This work goes on even in a pandemic. And I do applaud our IT department, our council office and all of elected officials who have taken extra steps and made hybrid meetings possible um, or remote participation almost normal. So thank you for that. We've heard some tonight about visioning and it's been coming up in conversations with me. It's been interesting to me to hear comments about how we define community as encompassing the entire area. Sometimes we seem to apply the term to an area when it suits us and to decline to do so when it doesn't. Both this evening and in conversations I've had over the last several months, a few individuals have spoken about the need for a general, area-wide, all-inclusive planning and visioning process through which we cast a common vision for Bloomington and the surrounding area before proceeding with any annexation. But when I've asked, those commenters have not been able to articulate what that would look like or how we would know if we were done with that kind of a process. They also haven't been able to articulate how it would differ from the planning processes produced by the comprehensive plan, Bloomington Climate Action Plan, the Transportation Demand Management Plan and more. Of course, those plans apply only to areas within the city of Bloomington and not to the surrounding areas, even though we may think of those areas as part of our community. It is thoughtful, intentional, selective annexation that will allow us to involve all those voices in just such visioning and planning. Following up on Mr. Myers' comments just a, a few minutes ago, Mr. Wicker made the point that many of those speaking are not currently our constituents. And it is thoughtful, intentional, selective annexation that will allow us to actually represent those voices. Last week, I described Bloomington and the surrounding area as an ecosystem, a network of interconnected resources and people. And I've heard nothing that leads me to believe otherwise. I'll continue to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other final comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Volan?
Thank you. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you fine.
Thank you.
Yes.
Number of thoughts, uh, there are many people who deserve a, a response to their thoughtful comments. Um, I'll do what I can to catch as many as I, I did. Uh, I agree with Mr. Riggins, which is why I've been advocating uh, pay as you throw as part of the new sanitation system that was implemented several years ago. The uh, the, one of the few advantages that the the orange tag or the, in the kind of the orange bag program has is that it allows people who are, are good at reducing their waste flow, it rewards them for it. And we should be able, we should, we have the technology to resume that aspect of our program. I, I take Dr. and Mrs. Andrews' concerns very seriously. Um, I am not uh, happy to hear that she experienced what she did uh, downtown. I do have to ask some basic math questions, though. The city is about one-sixth, maybe, the size of the county. Um, the police force as uh, uh, reduced as it is right now, uh, still represents more than double the number of officers who represent the sheriff's office, the sheriff's deputies. At any given time, in the city of Bloomington, there's more than twice as many officers on duty as there are in the county, or rather, I should say, outside the city. Um, sincerely, there are only patrolling areas that are outside the city. I, I, I do the math and I, I mean, this, none of this is to say that we shouldn't be addressing the issue of uh, police recruitment and retention. Uh, and I trust that uh, that issue will be addressed in due time. But even with those reduced numbers, the uh, likelihood that someone will respond is simply greater just from the, the math. The same is true for smaller things like uh, snow removal. I mean, the effect, I did the math on it and effectively uh, it's, you're, you're in the, in the city, you're likely, you're more than three times more likely to have your road shoveled based on the number of trucks we have in the area that uh, city trucks have to, um, to patrol. So, uh, you know, the, the issue, I mean, certainly the issue downtown is concerning and should be concerning. Everyone should feel safe downtown. It's also important to ask the question, do people feel safe out where they live? And while uh, there are many people outside uh, the city limits who are perfectly fine of the a service they get from, say, the sheriff's office, perfectly acceptable. Uh, how often do they actually uh, uh, you know, kno- know they have a need for it? Uh, let alone when they actually have to make a call and ask, how quickly do people respond? Uh, that's not a question that's easy to answer here, but again, just from the basic demographics of it, it's more likely that a response will happen in the city. The same is true for fire as well. Ms. Ford raised an interesting question. The state is indeed democratic. And it passed the laws that it passed democratically. What is undemocratic and what the Supreme Court found unconstitutional is retroactively applying uh, those laws to what Councilmember Flaherty correctly noted was a fair contract. What would be undemocratic would be if the laws passed in, say, twenty nineteen were applied to Bloomington who applied in twenty seventeen for annexation and the city and the state illegally, unconstitutionally intervened specifically to prevent this annexation. If uh, after this annexation, Bloomington should expect to follow uh, the law. But I mean, we should be uh, judged on the law as it was when we filed this uh, these ordinances. Secondly, uh, I want to think a little bit out loud about the timeline of annexation. Mayor Hamilton took off at the beginning of twenty sixteen. Uh, he decided that it was about time to start annexing. He decided to annex everything. But he spent several, his administration spent several months developing a complete fiscal report to say how much it would impact each individual property. Not every city does that, okay? And, and the city was criti- critiqued for how much money it spent in order to, to, to create, to provide that information. I think the city would have been banned if it did and banned if it didn't. But at any rate, the administration released annexation in February of twenty seventeen. And uh, the city was in the midst of following the state mandated five-month process for, it's one of the longest processes uh, that a city is obligated to follow uh, in state law. And halfway through, we were interrupted. Uh, the, the lawsuits that followed were not resolved until December of last year. When I got the phone call, when I was president last year, I got the phone call saying that the city had won at the state level, that one at the Supreme Court level. Uh, the administration brought back annexation about five months later. That's how long it took to reconstitute the data. All right? So, it's fair to critique the administration for the date it chose for the original annexation, January one, twenty twenty, which would have happened at the twenty nineteen election. But there was no time uh, in this second round that they could have done it any earlier. They've been consistent in their application of the proposal up to and including the date. So I understand that, uh, you know, I mean, the, that's, there's a reason to be critical of that. And yet, it's not, it's not appropriate the second time. The administration worked as fast as it could to get this together. And we've asked many questions, this council's asked many questions about uh, why couldn't it be done sooner? Um, I see last settler syndrome on full display. People who think that they moved to an area and they believe it should never change, that it, that they should be the last people to settle a place and should stay as it was the way they got there. Some neighborhoods in area two just couldn't believe that the city has grown all the way out to where they've lived for a long time. Other people didn't recognize that their neighborhoods were only possible because the city extended utility services to them. Some people don't recognize that sprawl is low-density housing by definition. That i- if you densify uh, places that were sprawl, you get, i- i- you, you improve it. It's less sprawling than it was. But the, the low-density use of land is sprawl. I'm sure that Commissioner Thomas does not mean to imply that wanting people who claim to be Bloomingtonians to be full participants in that community is causing them harm. The idea that somehow uh, the very uh, uh, act of annexation is harmful and nothing but harmful. I'm sure she didn't mean to imply that. Because I represent the residents of Bloomington. I represent in particular the fourteen, fifteen thousand or so residents who are in the current city limits of, just in District Six. I, I have a duty to them. If I believe that the outlying areas are somehow taking advantage of the city uh, without uh, paying their fair share, who is being taxed unfairly without being represented? It's kind of an inversion of taxation without representation. It's that this, the people of the city of Bloomington are paying for services that are enjoyed by, by many more people who uh, live on the edges of the city of Bloomington. I've already covered the idea about uh, tourists uh, paying uh, taxes. Uh, people who drive through town do pay uh, you know, uh, wheel taxes. Uh, there's a lot of different ways that local government uh, covers its costs. But um, the majority of the people in the areas intended for annexation may be in opposition. It may have been a mistake that the city did not annex them when steward services were extended or other services were extended. But how should one of the many people on a fixed income in the city of Bloomington feel about this complaint of someone who's on a fixed income outside the city? Does it mean that we should simply unilaterally stop all city services because some people supposedly can't afford them? It, it, it's it, it's been really disheartening to hear some of these arguments over and over. You know, I, I would urge people to study the history of cities. Uh, and if they didn't annex, what kind of environment will we live in? Um, I do understand the strong feelings that many people have. I, I still, uh, it, it has not swayed me as, as much as I've taken their critique to heart. I still believe this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other final comments from? Thank you. Do we have any other final comments from council member Rallo and then council member Smith?
Thank you, President Sims.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. President, Mr. President, Mr. 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 Rallo has spoken once already, could we hear other first round before second round?
This is final comments and no one, this is the only round in final comments. Council member Rallo, please, and then council member Smith.
You, you're calling on me? Okay.
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, well, just to respond uh, twofold, one is to council member Volan. Um, I, when it comes to
I do apologize, I'm looking at my notes and council member Volan is absolutely correct. Um, I will now go to council member Smith and then come back to you, that's okay. Sorry about that. Council member Smith.
Thank you, President Sims. Well, yeah, look, look at area two. Um, see how it was, it's curved around the side of the city. It's mostly rural, it's not very dense. There's no ongoing projects, there's very little chance of industrial development, business development. There, there, there doesn't seem to be any really great reason for, what, what good is it going to do the city? I, I just can't, I just can't see it for area two. Um, what's, what's the equitable exchange that, that the residents will get? Uh, what's the growth going to benefit the city for? I have no idea. Uh, I, I don't really see that it's going to be a benefit. And, and, you know, why wasn't the process originally in, you know, began in two thousand and sixteen or seventeen? You know, why didn't it start as a voluntary process? Um, we, you know, I don't, I don't understand, I don't, I don't agree that we have to make up twenty years of an- annexing territory because it hasn't been annexed for twenty or thirty years. I, I, that's, it's not a, it's not a good argument for me. So you have the, the additional territories that we're annexing. You have to provide police, water, sewer, Bloomington Housing Authority, paving, fixing potholes, snow removal. I, I just, uh, I can't buy the argument that that it's this annexation proposal, you know, is going to do all those things in a, in an orderly and uh, equitable fashion. So I'm, I'm going to oppose this one as well uh, for area two. So, thank you.
Thank you, council member Smith. Do we have any other council members who have a final comment in the first round before we move on to second round? Seeing none, council member Rallo begins the second round comments, final comments.
Thank you, President Sims. Um, well, first I'd like to address uh, something council member Volan said, which I have some sympathy for, and that is that um, the areas to, to be, to be annexed, that we're annexing may see uh, better uh, law enforcement uh, response. Um, because of course the sheriff is of only a few staff and covers the areas outside the city. However, uh, my, my concern is really twofold. And that is with the increasing stress and an already overstressed police department by expanding this area, which isn't given, and I don't think we can deny that, that that's going to occur. Um, but also for the current city residents uh, who will find law enforcement diluted because they'll be carrying, covering a larger area and will be trying to play catch up in terms of hiring new staff. So um, that addresses that. And then the other uh, council member Flaherty um, mentioned uh, sprawl and what induces sprawl. Um, I, I, I don't know if we agree or disagree, but I, but I would say that this then um, sprawl has been an evolving uh, topic over the past few decades. And clearly it's occurred in county, it's occurred in the county under different leadership in the past. Um, the current county leadership has done um, tremendous job, I think, in developing land use plan uh, that specifically addresses preserving rural character. Now, by definition, the city doesn't maintain or concern itself with rural character. And rural character means low density, i.e. not sprawl. Um, also, uh, clearly, cities that have, for instance, urban services boundaries, uh, control sprawl. But in this case, what we're doing is if we're expanding the geographic uh, area of the city and therefore implying we're going to be expanding various services there. And I would guarantee that the land values will increase and that the zoning density will increase. And therefore, uh, when we annex area two, uh, this will induce sprawl. Um, it, it isn't, you know, we, we can, we can debate whether certain decisions made by the county have have created sprawl or not, but I think the city uh, expanding services into undeveloped areas is going to induce sprawl. I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Rallo. Uh, council member Flaherty, second round, please.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, on the topic again of, of housing and sprawl, um, dense development around a city is not sprawl. The exurban developments of the county over the last decades have been sprawl. We live in a growing community, a desirable community, if we don't add housing, you can't stop growth in a desirable place. If you try, the only obvious and natural outcome is that you price out the lowest income people. They move to other communities, drive farther, increase emissions even more. You have to make room to house people in a growing community. The best way to do that is through a combination of strategies, including affordable housing, and yes, market rate housing affordability through things like paired patio homes when you do add new development and other types of attached housing that are more affordable by definition. That's the kind of development that the county uh, plan commission, commission led by Ms. Clements, who's been kind of at the end of these meetings, as well as commissioners have been denying and turning down. If you, Mr. Rallo is probably right, that some of the areas surrounding the city will develop over time, that's probably true whether or not they were annexed or no. Um, if they develop under city leadership, they will probably allow more people to live here. That isn't sprawl, that's helping prevent uh, the bedroom communities that people are commuting to from, uh, commuting here from now. So you have to look at the entire system. And again, uh, I think overwhelmingly, urban planners, the experts in this field would agree with what I'm saying here, that what the county has pursued from a policy perspective is pretty unquestionably harming affordability and harming our emissions profile for our communities. Um, so again, I think what Mr. Rallo is suggesting is just very incorrect, and I think uh, the folks who are experts in this field uh, would see it the same way. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Flaherty. Do we have any other comments in the second round? Do I see your hand, council member Volan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, oh no, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I think we need to define a term like rural. What is, what does it mean, just call an area mostly rural? Is there such thing as rural development? I mean, villages are developed, towns are developed, cities are developed. I don't think about development that's happening on farms uh, or in forests. Uh, ninety half-million-dollar homes being developed north of Church Lane is not rural to me. And they are also more sprawling and not better than a hundred and eighty quarter-million-dollar homes in the same place. Uh, council member, uh, well, also I was just going to say this, uh, you know, the Monroe County imports ten thousand uh, workers a day. That's why it's metropolitan area. Owen County, half of Owen County works in Monroe County. Those are people who uh, are, are people we should be concerned about too. If they can't afford even to live in the county, that they have to go that far away, uh, yet they're working here. Ten thousand net people a day commute into Monroe County to work. Uh, council member Smith can express doubt about the method by which services are provided or the quality of those services. Council member Rallo has been at the forefront of this critique of several different uh, services provided by the administration, which I have found valid and concerning. But to question the value of such services in the first place seems to run contrary to my colleagues' very oaths of office to serve the city that provides services in the first place. I represent District Six, fourteen thousand people in the city, they deserve services. Uh, that is who I represent. We represent collectively the eighty-five thousand people currently in the city limits. And we are following state law uh, on the, on how to manage urbanization. Cities and towns and villages are the tool that this state and every other state have created in order to manage the urbanization of any place, of all places. We are suffered to exist by state laws and municipal corporation. So the idea that somehow the development that our plans cover uh, are, are covering places that anyone would call rural is naive at best and a contradiction of our very jobs at worst. I, I find my colleague's position uh, mystifying in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments, final comments, council members? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? Thank you, or the clerk, please call the roll on ordinance seventeen dash twelve um, as amended by number, I'm sorry, as amended with the addition of amendment oh six. Um, that is area two A Southeast Bloomington, I'm sorry, area two Southeast Bloomington annexation. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, council member Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scambalary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance seventeen dash twelve is adopted six to three.